Ah, Houliam, Houliam.
Hmm?
Oh. L'audience se répise, veuillez vous asseoir s'il vous plaît.
Our session resumes, kindly take your seats.
A présent, nous appelons l'état défendeur à soumettre ses observations.
We'd like to call upon the respondent states to make their statements. We will then ask that you call your witnesses subsequently. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, honorable justices of the court. Uh, I'm going to start submitting on the admissibility and uh jurisdiction of the court and then we would wish to call our witnesses and then we wind up by submitting on the merits of the application. Uh, honorable justices of the court, uh in response to the application that has been fired against the United Republic of Tanzania, the respondent filed her lit light with the application together with the affidavits, eight affidavits shown by Mr Renato Simkude, uh Mr Charles Boris, Mr Marcelle Mabula and Mr Mavura Daïoudi, of which the respondents stated raised for adopt form part of our submission. Uh, honorable justices of the court, the respondent state disputes the allegations labeled against the United Republic of Tanzania. Further, the respondent disputes the jurisdiction of this honorable court to determine this matter as well as the admissibility of the application before the court. Starting with the jurisdiction of the court, it is the respondent's submission that this honorable court has no jurisdiction to hear this matter and our submission is based on the rational temporis jurisdiction of the court in a sense that, um, if you look at the applicant's application, they are complaining of the acts that occurred dating back to the year 2002. And honorable justices of the court, it is no dispute that uh the respondent state ratified the protocol to the African Charter on the establishment of the African Court on Human and People's Rights in 2016, sorry, 2006. Therefore, this court, on the basis of nani re- re- ah, nani re- re- oh, sorry. Uh, since the treaties are not retroactive, therefore, this honorable court lacks jurisdiction to determine the same. Uh, if it is very... It is, sorry. Okay. It is very evident from their submissions in paragraph eighteen thirty-two, thirty-five and thirty-seven, that uh the applicants are complaining of the acts that occurred from the year 2002. Since they have not demarcated, there are no demarcation as to the numbers of the attacks or the other allegations that have been labeled against the respondent, we submit that this honorable court has no jurisdiction. Coming to the issue of admissibility of this matter, it is our submission that, um, this application has not met the admissibility requirements as provided under Article fifty-six, sub- Article five of the African Charter on Human and People's Rights, read together with the Rule fifty, sub Rule two of the rules of the court. It is our submission that prior to filing of this application, the applicants have not exhausted the local remedies which are viable in the respondent state. Honorable justices of the court, the local remedies that the that are viable within the respondent states, including, um, the filing of a constitutional petition which is allowed under Article thirty, sub Article three of the Constitution of the United Republic of Tanzania, uh which is of the year nineteen seventy-seven.
Yes, please.
Uh, thank you, honorable justices of the court, saying that the human rights, the basic rights and freedom are guaranteed under the Constitution of United Republic of Tanzania from Article twelve to Article twenty-nine of the Constitution and upon violations of these rights...
Nous n'avons pas d'interprétation, messieurs, mesdames, les interprètes, les techniciens.
Interpreters, technicians, we're not receiving the interpretation.
Est-ce que les interprètes sont en ligne, s'il vous plaît?
Please verify that interpreters are online.
On peut continuer, Monsieur le Président. Je remplacer l'interprète, s'il vous plaît. On peut continuer. Merci. I think we can proceed now. I'll replace the earlier interpreter. Thank you.
Est-ce que vous nous entendez, les interprètes?
Oui, on vous attend, Monsieur le Président. Je vais continuer, je vais remplacer l'auto-interprète. Je vais continuer. I'll replace the other interpreter. Kindly proceed. This is Emmanuel Agbo. I'll be replacing the other interpreter from now. Thank you. We may proceed. I don't know whether anyone can hear me. Julius, can you hear me? I'll be replacing Wendy now. Can you kindly inform the court that I'll be replacing Wendy so we can proceed? Julius? Jacques? Can someone kindly inform the president that we can proceed? I'll be replacing the other interpreter. If anyone can hear me, please kindly inform the president. Apparently, no one can hear me. I don't know how we're going to solve the problem. Julius? Can you, I suppose you replace the other interpreter. Julius, can you hear me? Julius, Jacques, can anyone hear me? Can anyone hear me? Anyone hear me?
Est-ce qu'il y a l'interprétation maintenant?
Il y a interprétation, mais je ne sais pas si on m'entend. Je ne sais pas si quelqu'un m'entend, si quelqu'un m'entend quand disent au président qu'il y a interprétation, s'il vous plaît. Can anyone hear me? This is the voice of the interpreter. If you can hear me, kindly inform the president that there's interpretation. Looks like no one can hear me. Julius, if you can hear me, then they two should be able to hear me. Can you inform the court that there's interpretation in English? Please. Can anyone hear me? Oh. Julius, if you can hear me, kindly inform the court that there's interpretation in English. Can you hear me? Can anyone hear me?
I can hear you, Grandma. I can hear you, Grandma. Let me look for Julius. I'm using Zoom.
Julius should inform the court that there's interpretation in English. Anyone in court could inform the president so that we can proceed.
Est-ce que vous nous... Non. Non. Donc, c'est un problème technique. Okay, parce que si nous...
So, it's a technical problem. Because here, we cannot hear. Julius, kindly do something. Jacques, kindly do something. Help the judges so that we can continue. They are not hearing me. Please. I think we'll call on the parties to be patient while the technical problem has been solved. Julius, please go to the aid of the judges and let's get this problem solved. They cannot hear the interpreter. Oui, je vous entends sept sur sept, Monsieur le Président. Je vous entends très bien. Mais apparemment, on ne m'entend pas.
Grandma, vous nous entendez, s'il vous plaît? Est-ce que vous nous entendez?
Oui, je vous entends sept sur sept, Monsieur le Président. Je vous entends très bien. Mais apparemment, on ne m'entend pas. Il y a Julius qui a dit qu'il m'entend. Moi, je vous entends très bien. Je vous entends très bien. Apparemment, personne n'mentant sauf Julius.
Test micro. Test micro.
Yeah.
Test micro. Test. Test micro.
Yes, Manu, I can hear you very well and I just hope you two can hear me. But I've been told that I'm being heard by most of the people, but apparently the judges cannot hear me. I can hear you very well, Mr Nyongkuru. I can hear you very well.
Test micro.
Yes, Mr Nyongkuru, I can hear you very, very well. I just hope participants and judges can hear me too. That's my hope.
Test micro.
Yes, Mr Nyongkuru. Yes, Mr Nyongkuru, this is Emmanuel Agbo. I can hear you very well. I can hear you very, very well.
Test micro. Test micro. Sali. Test micro. Test micro portugais. Test micro français. Test micro anglais.
Yes, Emmanuel Nyongkuru, I can hear you very well. Can you hear me? Please let me know if you can hear me. Because I can hear you very well. Mr Nyongkuru, hello? Hello, Mr Nyongkuru. I can hear you very well.
Test micro français. Test micro anglais.
Yes, Emmanuel Nyongkuru, I can hear you very well. Please indicate if you can hear me. Emmanuel, I can hear you very well. Can you hear me too? This is Emmanuel Agbo. Okay, so all those who are online are getting me very well, but those who are inside the hall cannot hear me. That's what the president... Oui, je vous entends très bien, Monsieur le Président.
À travers le Zoom, vous entendez bien?
Oui, je vous entends très bien, Monsieur le Président. Et j'étais en train d'interpréter. Apparemment, ceux qui sont en ligne m'entendent très bien.
Test, test. Anglais.
Yes, Emmanuel Nyongkuru, I can hear you very well. Can you hear me? Yes, Emmanuel Nyongkuru, I can hear you very well and those online can hear me, I believe. Can you hear me? Please indicate if you can hear me. Check in the hall. Check in the hall whether the judges can hear me. Check in the hall whether the participants can hear me. Because I can hear you very well and I was interpreting. Oh, Emmanuel Nyongkuru, I can hear you, but apparently you can't hear me. I can hear you very, very well and some people have indicated. Okay.
Yes, I can also hear you very well, yes.
Okay. Try to see whether the judges can hear me. Try to see... Okay. Try to see whether the judges can hear me. Try to see whether, check whether the judges can hear me. Yes, now we're saying we can hear you. Okay, I don't know why it took so long for this to be corrected. Okay. Allo? Oui, oui, je vous entends, je vous entends. Parfait, merci. Portugais? Ouattara de? Portugais? We have no Portuguese? There is supposed to be Portuguese because Balbina is working into Portuguese. Arabic? Loud and clear, we're hearing you. Arabic? Yes, I'm hearing you loud and clear. This is Arabic here. Arabic, assalamualaikum. Waalaikum assalam, I'm hearing you loud and clear. Thank you. Portugais? Ouattara de? Ouh, ouh, hmm, hmm. Portugais? Yes, I'm in the Portuguese channel. Can you hear me? In the Portuguese, you have to move to the Portuguese channel. Channel one is Portuguese. Channel one is English. Those who are French speakers, those who are listening in French, can you hear the interpreters? French is channel two. French language listeners, can you hear? Very well, the French language speakers can hear. Israeli, can you hear? The president, can you hear the president? Yes, they can hear, so we can now proceed. Madame, you have the floor.
Honorable justices of the court, our submitting on the admissibility of the requirement. And I was saying that this application has not met the admissibility requirement as provided in Article fifty six, fifty six five of the African Charter on Human and People's Rights. Right together with the with Rule fifty, sub Rule two E of the rules of the court, which imposes, which impose a requirement for the applicant to exhaust local remedies before filing an application before the African Court. It is our submission that the applicants have not exhausted local remedies, even though the same are available, effective and sufficient. Honorable justices of the appeal of the court, sorry. The basic rights and fundamental freedoms are guaranteed under the Constitution of the United Republic of Tanzania nineteen ninety seven from Article twelve to Article twenty nine. And if there is any person who alleges that those rights have been violated, he has a recourse under Article thirty, sub Article three of the Constitution. In that article, a claimant can file a constitutional petition before the High Court of Tanzania for a recourse. Contrary to the provisions of Article thirty, sub Article three, the respondents, the applicants have not taken that course. In their submissions, they've stated that bearing in mind that they are legal persons, they cannot file a petition under Article thirty, sub Article three because they are not directly affected by the allegations that they are alleging before this honorable court. It is our submission that legal persons, including the applicants, have a recourse under Article twenty six, sub Article two of the Constitution of the United Republic of Tanzania, which allows any person, including illegal persons, who might not be directly affected by any violation of the basic rights and fundamental freedoms as provided under Constitution to institute a claim before the High Court of Tanzania. In this article, clearly stipulates that, I beg to read, it stated that every person had the right, in accordance with the procedure provided by law, to take legal action to ensure the protection of this constitution and the laws of the land. Honorable justices of the court, the High Court of Tanzania, together with the Court of Appeal, at, in various occasions, were faced with this similar matter. One of those cases is the case of Reverend Tequila versus Attorney General of the United Republic of Tanzania. In that case, the High Court held that Article twenty six two of the Constitution is an independent and additional source of standing according to which personal interest is not necessary in order to institute proceedings. Further, in the case of Attorney General versus Jeremiah, Jeremiah Tobezia, this is a civil appeal number sixty five of twenty sixteen. It is the Court of Appeal of Tanzania case. And reported at page fifteen, the court held that where the contravention of a basic right or duty is not bearing on one's personal interests, the petitioner may nevertheless shoulder the burden for the public at large by instituting the petition under Article twenty six two of the Constitution. In that regard, therefore, it is our submission that the applicants, being legal persons, are allowed to institute petitions in the High Court of Tanzania through invoking the provisions of Article twenty six two of the Constitution of the United Republic of Tanzania. Honorable justices of appeal, we are aware of the applicant's reply to our submission, of which they stated that the filing of constitutional petition is an extraordinary remedy as it has been held in various occasions by this honorable court. We wish to state that the honorable court, this honorable court, held that in a different scenario in which the applicant, most of the applicants, had already exhausted their local remedies to the Court of Appeal level. That's why the whole, this honorable court held in that way. But this, the present, the present, the present matter is different since the applicants had never approached the local courts of the respondent state in respect of allegations of the violations of the persons, the rights of persons with albinism. Further, it is our, our submission that the applicants have stated that the local remedies, the, the, the local remedies are not effective and sufficient since there are various attacks and killings of persons with albinism without any measures being taken. We wish to emphasize that on this point, on the effectiveness and sufficiency of local remedies, the applicant have only submitted in relation to arrest, investigation and prosecutions of perpetrators of the attacks and killings of persons with albinism, leaving out arguments on whether remedies are effective and sufficient regarding other alleged violation of human rights. Therefore, we wish to argue that since they've not touched on the fact that the local remedies are viable in relation to other allegations, we beg this honorable court to state that these, the applicants have not exhausted the local remedies. Honorable justices of the court, I wish to wind up my submission on the admissibility of this application before the court by stating that the admissibility requirements are cumulative and the failure of the applicant to meet one of the admissibility requirements renders the entire matter inadmissible. And I beg to refer this honorable court to a case of Godfrey Anton versus the United Republic of Tanzania. It's application number fifteen of twenty fifteen. It's ruling on jurisdiction and admissibility in which this honorable court dismissed the application as it did not meet one of the admissibility requirements. Honorable justices of the appeal, having said that, I beg now to start calling our witnesses. As I've said earlier, that we'll make our submissions on merits of the applications and reparations after we call our witnesses. Thank you very much. I beg to submit. Our, our first witness is Mr. Renato Simkude. We therefore beg to call upon Mr. Renato Simkude to give his testimonies on the measures taken by the respondent state to combat the attacks and killings of persons with albinism. Thank you.
Honorable president, honorable judges, the witness will now take the oath.
I, Renato Simatiasimkude, swear and declare upon my honor and concerns that I will tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Assante, Mr. Simkude.
Ah, thank you, Mr. Simkude. Mr. Simkude, where are you working? I'm working in the National Office. The National Office for Prosecution as the Assistant Director, which dealing with the crimes against human beings and the national aggression concerning the allegations. Tanzania didn't take any actions on protecting the rights of people living albinism. What are you saying about that? On my side, when I've been working in the National Office of Allegations as the Deputy Prosecutor and on legislative activities, I want to say that those allegations are not true because the nation has done a lot of things in protecting people with albinism and even conducting the prosecution for all activities which have been done against people living albinism. You're saying most of actions has been taken in relation to allegations of people with albinism. Which are those? As per Article fifty nine, Article A from the National Constitution of Tanzania, the Director for PP, on behalf, on behalf of the government, they go to get that. And despite all other activities, the National Allegation Office running the allegations and they conducting the investigation for the criminal offenses, there are lots of them, some on murder cases, including those have been done against people living albinism. Not only murder cases, but only, but also the mutilation, cutting some parts of the bodies and the other parts of the bodies. Now, those crimes, since they start to be done, the government through the National Allegation Office have been coordinating the investigation and run those cases in the courts with great achievement. And it has been giving awareness in the community that people should not continue to take those actions. And so sometimes the police have been taken to the community to protect people with albinism. Now, you are saying that you run the prosecution. Can you tell the court and give a specific example of some of the allegations of people with albinism which were conducted before the court, either you participated or any other officer? Since the year two zero zero eight, when I was employed, in two zero zero nine and ten, there are two cases where I participated to prosecute them in the court. But also there are some whereby we preceded them of it. One of it, it is from the village of Kinwakie, in Bariadi, Shinyanga, by that time, now it is in Neo, whereby there are two indigenous people, Saidiamaya, Kishua, Afisi. And the second was from Machanjo, in the district of Kishapu, Shinyanga, whereby Mubulu Madale, Jose Alengi, they were run in High Court in Tabora and whereby all the alleged were convicted by that time. And then it went off the Court of Appeal and they were sentenced to be hanged till death. And also some, apart from though there are some who participated personally, colleagues, but also through that office, the government has been overseeing some of the cases which have been rising. For instance, there are some cases of Baraka, where victim Sumba Wanga, they attempted to kill, they are found with parties of human beings and they are convicted. And there are other also cases whereby the government took steps for investigation, for instance, that of Tanga concerning Esther. Despite the fact that the alleged were freed, it doesn't mean that the government did take any action. Because to take action, it includes coordinating, prosecuting, sometimes the issue of cases needs some evidence and so forth. But there are other cases we continue. For instance, the recent one, that over Simon Kamachumi, whereby I went to coordinate investigation, the government took action, the alleged were found. And the cases continue. Even that of Gaida, the government made a task force. And there are various cases whereby the government has been taking actions to make sure to coordinate investigation, investigation and prosecute the cases to make sure that the necessary steps and measures are being taken to do justice. So government has been taking initiative in various areas. And now I swing on the context of prosecution and investigation because that is my specialization. You have spoken about the cases whereby the government brought the alleged before the court. Now, quickly, can you... Now, quickly, can you give us the overview? How many cases have been brought before the court and for which crimes? And how many people were being convicted? The data are there. It depends for which year. For instance, since two zero zero C up to twenty-three, there are more than seventy-two cases whereby the National Allegation Office has worked upon them. And out of those, there are forty-three for murder, some for attempted for murder, and some for grievous arms, some of them being found for the arts of human beings. And some of them, it is killing unintentionally, but most of the albinos, they are intentional. So there are more than seventeen cases where people are convicted and some of them, they are supposed to, the penalty given was to be hanged till death. And some of them have been given various penalties accordingly. But there is one whereby the alleged died because of, out of bed. So, that is justice. Sometimes when you take people to the court, there are requirements you have to observe. But also, there is, we take into consideration just the legal process in the public. When you speak about justice, there must be evidence. If there is evidence, they will take person to the court. If no evidence, you can't take someone before the court in order to avoid abusing the legal process. Now, when you look upon the trend that way towards, since that time, those crimes, all these events, the murder cases, killing people with albinism from that time up to now, how is the trend? After two zero zero eighteen, two zero zero nine, there was hiking of incidents. But the government made the task forces whereby it included people from National Allegation Office because for them, according to provision twenty-four, they are the ones that are supposed to coordinate investigations by beginning from President's Office, Police Force, prisons, officers and other organizations. Now, after coordinating investigation and running the cases before the court, the message just went back to the community, so there was a decrease for the killing of people with albinism. Now, on the context of NPSC coordinating investigation and conducting prosecution, the second which led to the reduction of the number of incidents is DPP was using his power under the provision of eighteen to give the guidance on how to deal with these cases. So right now you can see, despite the legal or the act direction has given guidance that the prosecution not go more than ninety days. The matter should be concluded. So, the government is at work. Thank you. Now, you have spoken about investigation and prosecution. What do you say about the prevention? You, the National Allegation Office, what are you doing to make sure that you prevent these incidents? You remember last year, Hacks and Presidency made a commission in order to improve the criminal institution. Now, when according to that, we are supposed to come out with a strategy for timely prevention, investigation. We don't wait till people bring the cases. So, we are collaborating those task forces to make sure that they are tracing the people who are dealing with the albinos issues. And once there is an incident about these issues, because now we take steps for coordination. Some of strategies are publicly, but some they are intelligently designed, so they are not announced publicly. But as per the provision twenty-seven, the DPP is the chairperson for the criminal platform. Therefore, there is data, the regional, national, among the agenda which have been discussed in the platform is about the time prevention, including killing people albinism and even other people. Now, we are going toward the election. There are rumors in the streets that normally in these periods, that's when you find it triggers the incidence of attacking and mutilating people with albinism. Now, you as the Office of National Allegation, how have you prepared yourself to prevent that, that should not happen? One, regardless of whether the year for election or not, we are positioning ourselves to fulfill our constitutional responsibilities without the respect of the environment. However, because the trend shows that in most cases in that period when the number increases, we have to lay a position ourselves through the public order which has been given on for the national integrity to make sure that we prevent. And therefore, we should take processes, even the electroprocess. Now, for instance, there are five stages, the issue of constitution, nomination of candidacy in the parties during the campaigning. There is also the voting and giving. As I saw that the purpose now, in every stage, we are positioning ourselves to make sure that there won't be any sexual relations, even killing people with albinism now. In this action plan, we are working closely with police and whenever there are rumors that there is an event or incident want to take place against somebody with disability, we always make sure that we coordinate the investigation. But also our office, it has a wing for receiving the claims. If it receives the information that there is rumors for certain incident to take place, normally our office takes place with investigative bodies to make sure that it takes action quickly as per provision sixty, number two. Because to give the DPP the power that whenever he gets information on something related to crime, he can run investigation on respective bodies. So, we have positioned ourselves to make sure we are doing it for the time. We have been having monthly meetings now officially on how to discuss and that's the approach which are taken right now. Thank you. You are using the word integration, national integration. What do you mean? That public order. He speaks straight in English, you can follow. Anything which can injure or disturb public tranquility like demonstration, you can follow him. And Rabu Jaji is speaking in English quickly. Anything public order, that we need national integration. Now, in this case which is brought before the court, even there is an allegation that children are being abducted with the intention of selling parts of their bodies. What are you saying? All these allegations will be there because crime is being done in the society, not only in Tanzania. What is needed is how government have you positioned yourself that you can ensure you prevent those actions. And once the incident has taken place, there must be an action which should bring confidence to the public. So those incidences are there. Now, for instance, now office, we have launched the gender desk. Apart from that of police, we have also ours. One of the issues discussed is on how we can team up any intelligency means on how we can deal on those issues. For instance, the issue of that lady in Kamachumi, it included all the organizations, all the state organs, and we reached the point where we could find the body of that lady. So, the issue of prevention, not the issue of only one institution, it's the society at large. Together, we can prevail. Now, for us, the national selection, we are positioned to make coordination and sensitization to society. So even sometimes, we go to the prisons according to the laws and provisions given. Also, we go to their houses for keeping children. For instance, last year, we had an inspection for children, prisons and other stakeholders dealing with children affairs to make sure that now any violation done against children becomes stopping. That's why we have launched a special desk in our office and it has a grant support from stakeholders. There is also an allegation that now these people who are being, who are committing these crimes, at the end of the day, we find them, they are freed. What are you saying on that? As I have said on the beginning, that for Tanzania, as per Article fifty-sixty, Chapter B and Provision eight, it says that when you open a conviction, there must be justice. Now, by doing that, it doesn't mean that when the allegations are not being brought before court, we are undermining that we don't care that somebody with albinism died, no. But in order to go to the court, you must have evidence. So that's one. Number two, there is a legal process. If you say that only the killing is happening, let me take somebody to the court, it means you are abusing the legal process. Number three, also the public interest. If there are people might be arrested and supposed to be taken to the court. I want to assure that our office, normally we do the coordination by using task force. And it's very rare to find that we waive the case, no. Normally we have satisfied ourselves that at the end of the day, we make sure that the procedure are followed. If you find somebody not being brought before the court, maybe lacking evidence. For instance, of that, that Tanga, that case was brought before court. The victims who are brought, the victims are saying that people are brought before court and then they are released. It means they are admitting that the government took some actions or initiatives. So, the court is led by evidences. So, you remember, they went to the court, the issue of identification, that will lead them to be released. And now sometimes we go for appeal if we are not satisfied. But we also try to observe the laws, the basis, the basis follows. But now, we're coming to charge a person in the court, we must have evidence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As the respondent states, any other questions to ask? I see there's no request for the floor. The applicants now. You have the floor to ask the questions to the witness. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Judge President. Since the attacks began in the early two thousands.
Les Anglophores commencent à recevoir, à entendre le soi-éli dans le canal.
Yes, the channel is open now, available for English.
Okay, you may proceed now.
Just to confirm, the total number of reported cases, how many are they?
More than seventy-four. We have seventy-four cases, national prosecutions.
Yes, how many were prosecuted out of that seventy-four? How many were prosecuted out of that seventy-four?
Yeah.
Seventy-four, seventy-four, those ones were prosecuted before the court.
And were prosecuted. Whether or not the persons were acquitted or found guilty, how many were prosecuted?
Seventy-four.
You look on our report and on our FIDABIT, there are seventy-four. Those are the ones prosecuted before the court. Some were convicted, some were released. So the total, you can find it there.
No, so is it your evidence that there are seventy-four cases that were reported and all seventy-four have been prosecuted?
Yeah, 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 there is a recommendation, yeah.
Is there any national documentation that can support this testimony?
Yes, when you inform our National Prosecution Service to inform our case management information system.
In the system.
That there is a report that is available, but it was never exhibited. Is this a report that could have been provided to this court? And if so, why was it not provided to the court?
Yeah, report here.
Yes, the report is there. The report is there.
Yes.
And if so, why was this report never presented to the court as substantiation for the evidence that you are giving today?
We are using a system, case management system, you can find in the system. But it is stated in the FIDABIT, given in the reply from the respondent stated, as stated, the analysis of those cases, you can find them in the system.
In the cases that were prosecuted, you stated that seventeen resorted in convictions. You indicated seventeen out of all the cases that were prosecuted, resorted in convictions.
Seven cases.
Seven.
Seventeen.
Zero seven or seven one seven.
Seventeen cases, yeah.
One seven, seventeen, out of seventy-four, the ones that you have records of.
Seventeen, one seven, seventeen, one seven, seventeen, one seven.
In the seventeen cases that actually resorted in convictions, how many of them involved compensation orders for the victims of the violations? The people who actually suffered the mutilations, the murders, the other forms of violation, how many of them were actually provided any form of compensation?
There are no compensation, but most of them, the victims, they are our witnesses. They are brought before the court, they could give their witness before the court. And even other legal issues could be ironed out. But I don't have direct data that how many people were incarcerated and were brought in those cases.
Compensation orders, something that is part of the criminal procedure, that a judge or a magistrate could actually have ordered in any of these cases?
Yeah, so it's one of the statistics exactly.
Not really how the statistics, how many orders were given, eh, unless when I go back and go back, revisit the report. But I've said in my witness that eh, those are the cases whereby the alleged were brought to the court and they are convicted in various cases before the court.
No, so you already dealt with the statistics. I'm asking, in terms of the criminal procedure within Tanzania court, is it possible for a magistrate or a judge, who is dealing with a criminal case of this nature, to order compensation for the victim?
Yes.
Who is the one who has actually suffered the violations?
Yeah, yeah.
And yet not a single case?
Yes, exactly.
Resorted in actual compensation for the victims?
Yes, they could, they gave order for compensation. And not only for those cases of Alibism, there are other even like real cases.
In the cases that you personally dealt with, I don't, I don't want you to speculate, I want you to talk about the ones that you dealt with. Where the victims provided with any kind of psychosocial support while as they were going through the criminal justice system?
Yeah, for the cases that I prosecuted, that one of both, both.
Was it, were, were these murder cases or were these cases that were mutilations where there were actual victims who could have been supported?
Yeah.
Eh, going through that process?
And you asked me about the cases that I personally prosecuted.
Or involved in, maybe not personally.
Yeah, well, yeah, that one of Mboje Mawi, there was eh a kind of eh witness protection, protection scheme, yeah. So the witnesses were taken to Shinjanga and of course, they were cared there and they testified. And of course, they gave us cooperation and in making testimony and eh. Because eh, when it comes to issue of victims, can it be the victim himself or herself of which an act has been done against him or her? But eh, the issue of victim also extends even maybe to the parents and other eh people of that nature. So in those cases, there was no special order of reparation in a, let's say, monetary form. But there was kind of fitness protection scheme that was offered during those cases. That one of Mboje Mawi and Mungul Madat, of which I personally prosecuted successfully from the High Court, Court of Appeal.
Yes, but the witness protection was to secure the witnesses so that the state could prosecute. But what happened to the witnesses themselves? Were they provided with any kind of psychosocial support? What a trauma that they had gone through?
Yeah, of course. Yeah, you know, as I said, that on the part of the National Prosecution Service, we coordinate investigation, we prosecute a case. Thereafter, other measures, extra trial, era, there are the institution deal with that one. Issues of social welfare and other things of that kind. We normally coordinate investigation, prosecute when there. In case, appeal comes, then we can to be proceeding with that particular issue, yeah. So the issue of protection depends on which stage that, that particular victim or witness eh should be protected and which particular institution is responsible. So it depends. So at that junction of prosecution, on the part of National Prosecution Service, only coordination of investigation and prosecution.
Honorable Judge, I have only one question for you. You say that it's a duty of the official prosecutor to coordinate the investigation and collect evidence.
Sure, sure, sure.
And there are seventy-four cases. And there are seventy-four cases, you said, there are seventy-four cases, which?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And instances?
That were taken to court, yeah.
And there are seventeen convictions.
Of course, there are many cases that were reported because it's the issue of eh process.
You are coming from NPS office.
Yeah. Prosecution, so those that were prosecuted, there are seventy-four.
Seventy-four.
Yeah. Now it depends from, because in term, we have another case of Asim Wofu, Kamachum, so the number will exceed. So when we come to the statistic, it depends on the eh interval of time, yeah.
Out of seventy-four, and you are coordinator of the investigation, only seventeen convictions. Do you see that?
Omside, homicide.
Yes.
Yeah.
So do you?
Because there are grievous arms, you know, attempted murder, but I'm talking about homicides, seventeen, we are convicted, yeah.
How many homicide cases did you have?
In total?
Yes.
As of today?
Eh, at that particular time, the cases you are reporting, which you depone in your FIDAB?
Forty-three, forty-three.
And the conviction is how many?
Seventeen.
Seventeen. Are you proud of that number?
Yeah, because as I said, that eh, the issue of prosecution is not only forcing getting conviction. You must have evidence, you add this evidence, eh, you present a case in court, then you present also evidence. And therefore, at the end of the day, eh eh whatever comes out of court, then eh you have to accept. And if you were at least satisfied, then you appeal, because the law is very clear.
How many appeals did you prefer? And how many convictions?
Yeah, I cannot have exactly number. Yeah, because the issue of numbers, yeah, we had some appeals out of those acquittors.
So you never appealed?
Yeah.
You are talking about reparation here, about compensation and so forth. Do you know there is something called moral reparation?
What?
Do you know what is called moral reparation?
Yeah, moral reparation, yeah.
How do you consider the person whose limb was taken away, who has lost the member of the family? And you see that there is no single conviction out of that instance?
Yeah, as I said, that eh, I put it very clear when I was making my testimony, that eh, eh, normal, when these acts of killing or a petition that you car, we normally also eh get feeling as prosecutors.
Have we evaluated your office, why you have very low rate of conviction on these cases?
Eh, that depends on eh, eh, depends on your perspectives, because the issue of not, as I said, is not of taking people to court and forcing conviction. You prosecute, you add this evidence, now once you get the argument, if you are not satisfied, then you appeal.
The law conviction rate is the, is it clear that the case were poorly investigated, is it?
Not that much.
So where are the perpetrators?
As I said, that there are some of the instances that the perpetrators were not found. For example, this case of Geta, we formed a task force, it is there, the file is not closed, so the government is working on that. We are looking for them, we have not got them.
How many?
That does not mean that the government does not take actions, we have taken action. But when it comes to the issue of prosecuting, there are principles, there are procedures. Because if you, if you force to prosecute people, the same public will come and say, you know, you are fabricating cases against the citizens. So you have to balance.
But there are victims out there, Renatos, there are victims out there, where the perpetrators were brought to justice.
Of course, the victims are there, but when it comes to the issue of persecution, it must have evidence.
That's why I'm saying that.
People from the street to court just because they are victims.
Is there any initiative to evaluate?
We have, yeah, we have, a number of initiative, I said in my.
So what did you do for the rest of cases? Because once you have only seventeen conviction, it means the other cases are uninvestigated technically and prosecuted.
I know, they were investigated, but I said that is for homicide. But we have also other cases of grievous arm, for example, those of eh Baraka, victim Baraka of Sumbang, attempted murder and eh, being unlawful fun with the human body.
We are talking about the cases with conviction, we are talking about those which were not.
Even that one, they were convicted, even that one, seventeen is only for homicide cases.
Do you know the gist of this matter before the court, that the government is not doing enough to protect the people with Alibism, do you know that?
Yeah, of course, I have been going through your application and that's why I said from the very beginning that it's not correct that the government.
Do you know, the only means you are viable to protect these people is to bring perpetrators to justice?
That's one of them, because in human rights, there is promoting, promotion of human rights and protection of human rights. There are a couple of initiatives.
Yes, may I have your attention eh, the applicant, the interpreters are not following your questions because you're going very fast with your question and answer. So if you're going to ask a question, allow the witness to respond to the question and then you can ask the next question, just to remind you that we're working with interpreters. And then be precise, concise with your questions eh. This, eh, it's good to have very specific eh questions, they must be precise so that we can move quickly and have the best from the witness, thank you.
I was asking about evaluating the performance of the Office of DPP in terms of conviction rate. Because if you, 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 these perpetrators are not brought to justice, that's why the, the problem is not going away, because they are out there.
Yeah, one of the evaluation that I can tell you, because you are talking in these cases, for example, from Bode Mari, two zero zero nine. One of the initiatives is that the government formed the National Prosecution Service from the Attorney General's chambers, because it was a department or division from the Attorney General's chambers. So forming the National Prosecution Service with this structure and leadership and the civilization process of taking prosecution from the eh investigative organs. That was one of the initiative to make sure that we strengthen this office so as to have successful prosecution always. And I can tell you now, if you go to the system that eh, case management information system for NPS, you'll find the conviction rate now is more than sixty-five percent. Here, because we are talking about these cases of five to ten years back. But if you come now to the, to our office, you'll find that the conviction rate is not like that one. Now, at least we have gone a marriage and we are proud of that. That's why I'm saying the government is working on this and has taken actions against eh these acts against, eh, killing of people with Alibism.
But you can agree with us, the problem is still there.
What?
You can agree with us, the problem is still there, the problem of killing people.
Absolutely, for me, I cannot take it as a problem, say there's challenges. Challenges always are there, not only in NPS, challenges, because prosecution is a process. Much as you know, also, the duty of proving and giving a case in your country is raised on the part of prosecution. But we have been trying our level best to make sure that we coordinate investigation and we prosecute successfully. That's why we may find now eh, we have the rate, the conviction rate is higher than it was. Because here, for example, you are talking about this case of Mboje Mari, two zero zero nine. So the level of investigation and eh performance of the entity by then is not like today. But if you could ask me about what is going on now, as far as the fight against the killing of people with Alibism, I can tell you now eh, we have gone far and we are doing better. That's why I'm saying again, and I repeat that the government have been working in protecting people with Alibism, including to make sure that the prosecution is always successful than it was before.
Do you know the court cannot award the remedy you have never asked for?
Which remedy?
Do you know the court cannot, can never award the remedy which you have never asked?
Yeah, yeah, of course, but I cannot eh 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 speak on the part of the court, because that will leave the court.
My question is.
But generally, I know that normally eh, you must pray, you seek for an award that the court will give you.
In the cases which you prosecuted, how many did you ask for compensation?
Yeah, I cannot recall the number, I cannot recall the number.
Did you ask for compensation?
We, yeah, we have some of the cases, normally, we ask for compensation, not only in the eh homicide eh with people with Alibism, but we normally, I cannot recall exactly number. But as I told you that now, now we have the case information management system in NPS, of which if we, you go there, you will find the statistics. You avoid eh eh to, to, to touch on the part of statistics, because maybe I cannot get them properly.
I'm not referring.
We have cases of that nature, I cannot recall the number, but we have cases of that nature.
I'm not referring to statistics, to the specific cases which you prosecuted for the person with Alibism. Did you ask for compensation? That's where my question is coming from.
Eh, no, 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 I can, I can, I cannot recall that one.
That's all.
Yeah, yeah. Let me speak the truth.
I just have one question. Um, you mentioned that you have gone far and you're doing better in terms of eh the protection of the rights of persons with Alibism. That's a very strong statement. And if that statement is true, my question is, why do we continue to have a hike in the cases of eh violations of the rights of people with Alibism? If you're doing, if you've gone far and you've done a lot in terms of protecting, shouldn't we be seeing an increase, a decrease in the number of cases or involving violations of the rights of people with Alibism?
Yeah, as I told eh the other time, that eh eh prosecution of these offenders is one of the initiatives. You cannot protect people with Alibism just for conducting prosecution only. There are a number of initiatives, prosecution is one of them. When our parties, I said that if you compare the conviction rate from five years back or ten now, now we have gone a marriage, you see? When this part of prosecution is one of the initiative. Hopefully that other initiatives, if they're also going to eh eh to be successful, eh, that will add value in the fight against these killings.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, honorable judges. The floor is yours to pose any questions. Judge Dean, we will start with you. Thank you very much, Judge President. Thank you to the respondent state and the witnesses. My first question is addressed to the representative of the respondent state, the respondent state's counsel, Articles twenty-six of the penal or the Tanzanian constitution. It is stated.
According to the procedure provided by law to take legal action to ensure the protection of this constitution and the laws of the land. L'expression, every person.
So the expression used is every person, what does that indicate? Does that indicate individuals like all of us here, or does it also include organizations like the Center for Human Rights, the Institute for Human Rights? Or Legal and Human Rights Center? And then I have a second question, Honorable President. I trust that I will be able to have a response from eh the council and then I will address the witnesses. Um, the council for the respondent state, you have the floor to respond.
The provisions of Article twenty-six, Sub Article two is, you have quoted, is applicable to every persons, every person including a legal person. And a number of legal persons in Tanzania have invoked the provisions of Section twenty-six, Sub two, to institute a matter before the High Court, including the third applicant in this application. And I beg to refer this honourable court for a case of um Legal and Human Rights Center, the third applicant in this application, eh, together with lawyers, environmental action team, National Organization for Legal Assistance versus the Attorney General, that was miscellaneous civil cause number seventy-seven of two thousand and five, in which Legal and Human Rights Center, together with two others, approached the court by filing a constitutional petition, the High Court of Tanzania, by filing a constitutional petition, challenging the provisions of Section ninety-eight, Sub subsection two and ninety-eight subsection three of the Elections Act on the allegation that they were viol- violative of Articles thirteen, twenty-one and twenty-nine of the Constitution. And in that case, those provisions were declared unconstitutional. Thank you.
The case you have just cited here. You have just cited the case with regard to provisions and conformity of the provisions of the law to the constitution itself, but not a subjective action of rights. Can you give us examples of organizations that have seized the High Court of victims of violations of the fundamental human rights? of victims of violations of the fundamental human rights?
Honorable justices of the court, I don't have an example right now where legal persons, including such as the applicants, where they filed the matter on behalf of the other, other victims of violations. But we have so many examples in Tanzania, I can provide the court later if I'll be allowed to. Thank you.
Merci beaucoup.
Thank you very much. Now the witnesses, uh, we would await cases, thank you. Now for the witnesses. My first question, why was a perpetrator against the woman who was a witness earlier? Why wasn't, why were they not, uh, found guilty by the court? Is that why they were not sentenced?
Yeah, asante, si ya yuwa ni Upi, abani Esther. Is it Esther?
Thank you, I don't know, uh, you are referring to. As I said in my testimony earlier, that criminal justice has its process. And when an incident happens, we have a way of coordinating investigations. We can get evidence and that evidence may not be enough, so.
Yes, I was talking of the old lady of sixty, of seventy years, I think she is Madame Esther, yes.
As I was saying, if you can look for further investigation and if you can't get more information, then you don't go ahead with the case. In our, our office, uh, participated in investigations. And our office, when the case was in the district, uh, court, we later brought that case to.
May I ask that you go directly to your response to my question, please?
So he was, uh, released because the evidence was not enough. And this person was not able to be identified by this person who claims to have been, um, uh, hurt.
Thank you very much and thank you, Vice President. Okay, thank you, Honorable Judge Mensahala, you have the floor. Thank you, Judge President. I have a question first of all. In terms of pre- prevention, generally, are you aware today in Tanzania, how many persons with albinos, uh, exist? And how, what regions have more persons with albinos than others? Because when we find a cases have been committed, uh, we would go to a certain community or region and, uh, this is where actions would be directed. So what statistics do you have on the number of persons living with albinism in Tanzania? Uh, just directly respond to those questions, please. Thank you.
Yeah, you are number exactly, uh, now is it?
Uh, knowing the exact number perhaps is difficult, but there are government institutions that, uh, deal with, uh, this kind of statistics. But for us as an office, uh, from the investigation that we did, the, the provinces near the lake, um, region, that is where most of the, uh, um, incidences occur.
Okay, so there is a problem as far as prevention is concerned. I have a second question. All the victims who have been witnesses have clearly said that they were cited as witnesses. Is that why they have not had a right to reparation? None of them have said they received compensation. Is it that, if it's the government that, uh, prosecutes and you have called victims as witnesses, well, when we ask if they've received compensation, they have said no. Is there no issue of procedure here as to why compensation has not been paid?
Yeah, uh, when the shot of Mashawu Yajinai, uh, Yakoma Zingila, Mbaguena, Batana Fidiya.
Criminal cases have a clear, um, uh, way on giving reparations. In this particular case, I don't have statistics to show which applications are in which the applicants were given reparations. But as an office of prosecution, our work is to do investigations from the beginning to the end. And decisions are made, uh, based on case to case, uh, um, circumstances. If, for, for now, I do not have any statistics to show how many cases were given reparations.
I have another question. We know that this procedure, all these activities are based on certain beliefs. So in Tanzania, what steps are you taking to, eh, eh, make sure that citizens understand that this, this behavior is not, uh, valid? That they should change their way of thinking regarding albinism?
Other crimes that are also happening as a result of people's, uh, beliefs, but we, uh, from prosecution office, we visit prisons, we sensitize people and want to help them to shine these retrogressive, uh, uh, faiths. And we have a special, a special, uh, unit in government and we also use media to sensitize people on the importance of shining, uh, uh, faiths and including, uh, killing of people with albinism. We also go into the prisons. And then. We have, uh, uh, units in provincial, district and national levels to sensitize people on issues to do with, uh, faith and other motives that make people, uh, to participate, uh, to, to do crime. We work in collaboration with other government institutions. Uh, some of them have a better capacity than us to, uh, to educate the public on this important, uh, thing. The section that I lead, we have had outreach programs to visit various places and to sensitize people on, uh, why it is important to, uh, to turn their, uh, uh, activities. We also use the police and other stakeholders. And we also have, uh, the snik- designated day, uh, nationally to, to, to sensitize the public on this issue. So we work with stakeholders and other government institutions to educate our people to follow our national values and to uphold them and to shine these other retrogressive, uh, uh, beliefs.
Thank you very much, Honorable Judge Anukam, you have the floor.
Um, let me ask my first question, let me direct it to the council. And that question is, as I said today, is there a national policy on albinism in Tanzania beyond the, the policy you have on disability?
Honorable justices of the court, currently, we don't have a national policy on albinism. What we have is a national policy on persons with disabilities in general, which cater for the needs also of the persons with albinism. So we have a, a, a national policy on persons with, with albinism as a whole. Uh, but currently, we are in the process of developing a national action plan for persons with albinism that will cater for the needs of the persons with albinism, including, uh, a number of issues will be addressed in that plan, including the issues of provisions of medical care, health services, assistive devices, even the issues of prosecutions of the perpetrators of the attacks and killings of persons with albinism will also be dealt with. There will be a witness who will come to testify more on the national action plan that is underway for the persons with albinism. Thank you.
Yes, please, there's a follow-up question. In your formulation or your attempt to formulate this policy, do you involve the Tanzania Albino Association? First question. And then secondly, you recall why the res- why the applicants were giving their evidence in chief? They had made reference to a national action plan, which is presumably with the, in the office of the Prime Minister. Eh, eh, are you using that as a working document as well?
Yes, uh, in fact, the, the witness or the applicant was referring to the national action plan whose development is underway. And, and it is, it is coordinated by the Prime Minister's, Prime Minister's office, which is the, the, an institution which is mandated to develop the same. So as I, as I've said, there will be a witness who will explain further on the national action plan. And, uh, a number of albinous societies have been involved in the development of the same, including the Tanzania Albinous Society and the Federation for the Persons with Albinism.
I thank you. My, my next question, Mr. President, would be to the witness. I would like to refer the witness to his, um, his counter affidavit and particularly paragraph eight. In that affidavit, you have said that between the period two thousand and six to two thousand and twenty-three, your office has dealt with seventy-one cases, although in, eh, in evidence in chief, you talked about seventy-four. Seventy-one cases which were initiated in various courts within the mainland Tanzania. What is curious to me is, out of those cases, you said the Court of Appeal have upheld eight cases, eight. And in seven cases, fourteen accused persons were convicted and sentenced to hanging, sentenced to death by hanging. And then one case, three accused persons convicted and sentenced to twenty and fifteen years in, in remand. You recall that argument?
Yes.
Yes, then my question is, what has happened to the other fifty-five cases? You only gave us explanation regarding sixteen and you have a total, let me work with your seventy-four. So what has happened to the fifty, fifty-nine other cases?
Yeah, as I said that, as I said that, this is statistics, see? We supplied the statistics, see, uh, up to two zero zero, uh, twenty twenty-three. And when I was being cross-examined here, I mentioned the current statistics, because we have other cases that came after twenty twenty-three. And I was referring to homicide cases, but we had also other cases of grievous harm, because I was asking for the homicide cases. So, uh, you'll find we have homicide cases, grievous harm and attempted murder and one, uh, case abated. So the statistics, uh, depends on, um, uh, uh, a particular interval of time. So those one of, uh, twenty twenty-three, I was being cross-examined here about the number of, uh, cases. Then I said that, uh, uh, as of today, if you go to the case information management system of NPS, then you'll find, uh, uh, the numbers increased, yeah.
So the other cases are just pending, that, I think that is the concern of the court.
Which cases?
You reported on sixteen and there are seventy-four, what has happened to the remaining cases? Are they pending, still pending?
They are not pending.
Are they in court?
Yeah, the cases that I was mentioning, they were already disposed, except those of twenty twenty-four. But they were disposed with a different nature of, uh, disposed, uh, conviction, acquittal, abet, yeah.
My, my last question to the witness, Mr. President. Uh, when, when Leonard Cancer asked you on the preventive measures, your body seemed to, to adopt. And it seems as if your mandate is very wide, you investigate, you prosecute and you sensitize. That's interesting. And you said in course of your evidence in chief, that you ha- usually have regular meetings with persons with albinism that to maybe come up with means of reducing or curtailing this growth, this, this practice in the society. And my question is, in these meetings you have, is it with, do you involve the, the albinos themselves? Do you involve persons with albinism in your meetings?
Yeah, now it depends, as I said, that, uh, really as we're saying, that, uh, uh, our mandate, we don't investigate, we coordinate investigation. Under Section twenty-four of the National Prosecution Service Act, we coordinate investigation. So we team up, we give directives to the investigative organs, you know? When's the, uh, uh, there is an issue for criminal nature. Now, we have different fora. For the national criminal justice forum, uh, there is no representation of people with albinism. However, we have some other stakeholders meeting of which, uh, we normally, we invite, uh, those who are interested. And, uh, we have been dealing with NGOs sometimes, you know? Uh, especially in those stakeholders meeting once happen. Because our duty is a bit different from other institutions that they combat these killings. Because our duty is pure coordination of investigation and prosecution. So sometimes you cannot take a person with albinism to involve him in investigation, because that's purely a technical task. But that does not mean that we ignore them, no. We also cooperate with them using other fora and we have those fora. For example, uh, last week, we had the Indodoma inter NGO fora, of which the Deputy Prime Minister of Tanzania was Gestofana. And we were invited there, a number of NGOs were there. So such kind of fora, we meet them there. But in the coordination of investigation and prosecution, it's only those who are mentioned in the law, investigative organs and National Prosecution Service, because it's a technical issue, yeah.
Thank you, sir. May I know, according to your definition for persons with disabilities, it talks about, um, those with physical disability, chronic, ease, um, persons with learning disabilities such as autism and others and, and albinism. Now, app, all these, all these persons with disabilities, apart from those.
Honorable Justice Adji, just wait a little bit. Hello? Est-ce que nous avons la traduction en français, s'il vous plaît?
Do we have interpretation in French, please? French channel, we cannot receive you. Okay.
Yes, the question is, your act and your laws have defined. Yes, the question is, your act and your laws have defined persons with disabilities. And they include persons of unsound mind.
There is no interpretation in French. There is no interpretation in French. We cannot hear the French-speaking interpreter.
Allez-y, s'il vous plaît.
Thank you, thank you, President. Yes, the question is, your laws define persons with disabilities to include persons of unsound mind, persons with physical disability, persons with learning disability, persons with communication, all of them including persons living, persons with albinism. Apart from persons with albinism.
No. Le traducteur, nous avons tous des difficultés maintenant.
Are the others killed or harmed?
People that seem to have difficulties now.
Those with albinism, do they kill them or harm them?
It's not that much, because normally, for example, for the issue of killings, you'll find sometimes there are motives, maybe people have conflicts, they kill each other. But when it comes to the people with albinism, there is, you'll find normally there is no confrontation. You'll find a person is business, or I can see economic in economic context. And that's why even the government has taken measures to protect these particular groups. Because normally, they are killed not because of either confrontation or, you know, it's because of their status. But again, even if those other people with disability apart from people with albinism, again, as I say, that once that particular act is done, our role is there. We coordinate investigation and we prosecute, if at all, there is evidence.
Thank you. And as an experienced person like you and investigations that have come out, can you tell us the reasons why persons with albinisms are either harmed or killed?
Well, maybe the secretary, they know those who do that. But as you are saying that you're out of experience, that normally, some they think maybe if they take the body parts of people with albinism, they will get financial, you know, advantages. You know, that is the basic. If there are other reasons, they come from that center. But the issue is profit. The issue is to strengthen their financial muscles. That's the point, they normally do that. But as I said, that is what I hear. Because I cannot testify for that because I hesitate to testify on why they do that. My colleagues will cross-examine me on that and not have a problem. But yeah, at least that's what I get out of experience, that is, because of strengthening their financial muscles and especially, as we ask that out of experience, they are saying sometimes that's why it's done along the lakes because involved in the fishing activities and mining activities. But as I said, that is from what I normally hear. I cannot be for sure. But as a prosecutor, once you kill a person, whether he's with albinism or other disabilities, the law will take its course.
Yes, you told us that you start curbing albinism from two thousand and six to two thousand and nine. Are you aware that in twenty seventeen, the Cross Border Operation Committee was formed among Tanzania, Malawi, and Mozambique in twenty seventeen? Are you aware?
I'm not, I know that there is a kind of a joint committee. I don't know involves which countries. But I know there is also a task force of anti-human trafficking, and there is another component that has been inserted there dealing with human trafficking of body parts, especially on the part of children. That at least for sure, I understand that it is there. But I know there are such kind of mechanism, though I am not quite sure of the parties in that particular partnership arrangement.
And it was initiated by the International Office for Migration. Are you aware? International Office for Migration. On the basis that killing and harming of persons with albinism was on ascendancy. Are you aware?
I know there are such kind of initiatives. I am not quite sure who initiated that. But at least I know there are some kind of initiative like that one, yeah.
And despite all these attacks on these marginal rights people, Tanzania hasn't enacted a law to address this menace with particular reference to persons living with albinism, isn't it?
We have the legal framework, we have the legal framework, the Pino Code is there. We have murder case, we have.
Yes, I understand, but I'm talking about them alone, protecting them.
Specifically.
Because among the marginalized group, they are only one under attack. But there's no specific law to protect them.
Yeah, there is.
What is it?
There is that one of people with disabilities act, I think, something like that.
Disabilities one, it encompasses about twenty categories of people, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, of course, of course. There is no specific for albinism. We normally use Pino Code, and Pino Code is there, and we find it that Pino Code is enough. And because it carries all such kind of acts when they're done. If it's a murder case or assault, grievous harm. So we have the offenses in the Pino Code, and normally we charge using the Pino Code, and we think the Pino Code is enough. And we have been using that one, and we are getting conviction. So I think the Pino Code is there and is enough. In case, out of research, there will be a need to have a specific registration. Time will take its course.
Mr. President.
Merci à vous, à présent, honorable juge Blais Tchikaya, vous avez la parole, s'il vous plaît.
Thank you, we now give the floor to Judge Blais Tchikaya.
Merci, honorable Tchikaya, honorable judge Dumisa, vous avez la parole, s'il vous plaît.
Thank you, Judge Tchikaya. Judge Dumisa, you have the floor.
Yeah, I'm not getting.
Judge Dumisa, you have the floor.
Les interprètes, nous avons des difficultés, nous ne vous recevons pas, s'il vous plaît, les interprètes.
Interpreters, we have difficulties, we cannot hear you. Something should be done about it, Julius.
Okay, c'est bon maintenant, écoutez, on essaie encore.
It's okay now, can we try it once again? We cannot hear Judge Dumisa. I don't know whether he has unmuted his microphone.
Hello? I don't know if I'm coming through.
We can now hear you, Judge Dumisa. We can now hear you, Judge Dumisa, we hear you now.
I was saying that the case by the applicant seems to be buttressed by what they state in their reply to the respondents' submissions. And that they do in an affidavit that they filed with us. And if I understand their position well, at its worst, they say you have done nothing. But at its best, my sense is that they say all measures that you have taken to deal with albinism in Tanzania are measures that have been done or taken by you because of this application. So I would like to get your sense of response to that. You did anything that you claim you have done to deal with the violations of the individuals living with albinism because of this case. But to be more precise, in paragraph sixty-seven to seventy-two, in summary, they again come and say, whatever you have done now is not enough. For instance, they say the provision of essential medical supplies such as the sunscreen is something that the respondent state could have easily achieved through international cooperation and assistance. Now, it means you have not done anything in that regard. What would your response be if all that they say at its best, that what you have done is not enough? It's woefully, in fact, somewhere, they say, is woefully inadequate, even when you consider it to have been something that was triggered by the application that was brought. So I just want you to give us a sense of how we must deal with this accusation of the efforts done by the respondent. Thank you, Mr.
Merci, honorable judge Dumisa, vous avez la parole, s'il vous plaît.
Thank you. It's not true.
Thank you, Judge Dumisa.
There is nothing that has been done to promote and protect the rights of people with albinism. Because various measures have been taken, as I said in my testimony, especially when I am a part of the National Prosecution Service. Measures are many. Hopefully, other agencies, government agencies, other witnesses will come to testify on their parties. But when they party for the coordination of investigation and prosecution of these cases, as I said, we have done a lot. And we cannot, as a matter of fact, and this is not only in Tanzania, that you can do it hundred percent at once. It's a process. Because human rights protection and standards, they tend to differ depending on the socioeconomic and political setup of a particular jurisdiction.
Mr. President, if you may, may I just make up a follow-up question, which is more direct? What is your considered response to their vehement or to the claim made by the applicants that whatever you have done, particularly since the launching of their application, and what you are now testifying are measures to meet what the applicants say are inadequacies? They say whatever steps you have taken and I call them, are woefully inadequate. How do you counter that?
I cannot say that much that is inadequate. What I can say, for example, now, part of the National Prosecution Service, we have taken measures basing on the Constitution of our native that we have. And this is, as we go on, as I was being cross-examined, I pointed out that if you check the level of conviction rate and even in the prosecutorial measures, ten years back and now, we have gone farther. For example, now we have civilization of persecution. We are trying to separate these prosecutorial duties and investigative duties so that we leave the investigative organs to be and have much time to make investigation and the issue of prosecution to be done by prosecutors. And up, we are speaking, almost in all districts, we have state attorneys who are prosecuting, with exception of forty-seven districts, of which this financial year, we are going to open those offices. So for the prosecutorial duties, that I can say that's one of the measures that the government has taken. And as I said, that it's a process. So even if that is considered as inadequate, but because it's a process, we are sure that we'll reach a point that it will be adequate. So it's a process.
Merci, honorable judge. Vous avez la parole pour vos questions.
Thank you, Judge Duncan, you have the floor for your questions.
The question I'm going to ask you has already been put to the Leonard Council, but I need your answer. I need to hear you answer this one. From where you sit in your office, are you aware of any national plan or strategy specifically that deals with people with albinism?
Yeah, as I said, because we work with other government agencies, I know that there is a framework, policy framework for that. If I'm not mistaken, it's with Prime Minister's Office. But there is such kind of thing within the government. And we are told that it will be launched soon. So there is a framework, there is a framework for that.
Have you seen, have you had opportunity to look at it yourself?
Yeah, because.
Because this is your area, I'm sure you must be having a lot of interest.
Yeah, yeah, we have been involved.
Have you read it?
Of course, in the preparation for that, because there were some engagements on that, you see? And we had a meeting with the old regional commissioners that was organized by the Prime Minister's Office, and I was invited to make a paper there on the measures that the National Prosecution Service has taken so as to have successful prosecution. And in that meeting, we are informed by the technical personnel from the Prime Minister's Office that there will be such kind of policy framework. So it is there. I'm not quite sure to say here how it looks like, but it is there because we were taught that it was prepared. And because this is from another office. And because this is from another office, I hesitated to talk much on that because I am not a spokesman of that particular office. But at least I'm aware because we have been involved in such kind of arrangements.
Thank you. From your testimony, I could tell that you deal more with prosecutions of these cases than any other thing. We had witnesses here in the morning and I could tell you that there are a lot of expectations. And these expectations could be dealt with or could be answered on different levels. Now you deal with the prosecutions. At your level, there is something you can do. And that goes with compensation or asking for whatever name, you may call it damages or you call it reparations. They could be limited when you are doing criminal prosecutions. But the question is, so that is at your level with criminal prosecutions. For the cases which you have prosecuted, have you asked the court for compensation in any one of them? Because let me tell you one thing, you know, in a court of law, what you ask is what you get.
Yes.
You don't ask, you don't get anything. You can ask and when you ask, they refuse, they will give you reasons. So my question is, have you asked for some compensation in any one of the cases which you have prosecuted? And whether you've been able to get for the complainants? If you've not gotten, whether there are reasons that were given by the court for not giving you? And probably I should emphasize that the witnesses who are here, they need help clearly from their testimonies. So that's why I'm asking that question.
But for those two cases, we did not ask for compensation. Those two that I prosecuted. We prosecuted, they were convicted and sentenced to mandatory death penalty.
Probably I would just be interested as a follow-up, why don't you ask for compensation? The Criminal Court can give limited.
Yeah, I see.
There are two things. When you prosecute somebody who has harmed one of the victims, it's okay. They will get some satisfaction, but they also need a lot of help, much more than that satisfaction from the prosecution that arises or comes out of prosecution.
Yeah, as I said, for those two cases and as I said that when we are making prosecution, we have the factors that we consider, whatever we are doing in the cause of prosecution. So for those cases, as I said, that we did not ask for orders for compensation. And as I said, that in the prosecution, we have a number of factors that we consider. And sometimes some of them, we cannot even put them to the public. But I agree, as you are saying, that there are some of the cases of which the prosecution side may ask for compensation. But as I said, that for those cases, there are some other measures that we are taking by the government to make sure that the victims of these cases were taken care. Because sometimes you may ask for compensation, but you can have other schemes of which may be more profitable than even compensation. Yeah, yeah. But I agree that it's very, very important. That is, that's what I said when I was being cross-examined here, that if you see the prosecution that we are doing now and that of some years back, there are some improvements that we are having, experiencing and they all add value in the chain of prosecutorial duties.
Thank you. Mr. President, that is all.
Merci à vous Honorable Judge, is there any other questions?
Thank you Honorable Judges, any other questions? I see none. I do thank you for your testimonials. Do you have another question Honorable? Yes, you have the floor. Thank you, Mr. President.
Considering his experience in this matter, I just want to put a straightforward question to you and that is to say, would you in your own opinion say there has been an upsurge in cases of attacks and violation against persons with albinism?
What? I didn't get you. I did not get.
I shall repeat?
Yeah.
Yes. And I want a straight, just a straight answer. And my question is, from your experience, considering the position you hold in the government of Tanzania, would you say in recent time that there has been an upsurge, increase in the number of attacks on persons with albinism?
The increase of attacks?
Yes. Are you receiving more reports that give, that make you to perhaps investigate, coordinate the investigation and prosecute?
Yeah, because the trend and patterns as well, that in two zero zero eighty up to twenty seventeen, there was decreased, decrease of incidences. And that because of the measures that were taken. But recently, there are some few cases that happened and we have taken also measures. So they are not that much compared to other types of homicide cases. But they tend to happen here and there. So they are not continuously. The patterns is there are trends, we find some of the time they tend to happen and then they disappear, then it comes again, you know? That has been the trend and the patterns.
So do you have your statistics, any, any verifiable evidence?
Yes, yes.
To support what you have just said?
Yeah, yeah, we have the statistics and I say in my testimony that so as to have the accurate statistics, we have established the so-called Case Management Information System of National Prosecution Service. So if I go now in the system, you find and get the data there. That was one of the initiatives because we found ourselves that in order to combat these atrocities, that one of the tool is to have accurate statistics so that we can sometimes even tend to assess ourselves of the measures that we normally take. So we have the system and we have gone a bit further that this system is being integrated with the police system, but not in all cases, few of them. This is to make sure that normally we have the statistics that they tend to complement each other. So, so that, that is one of the initiatives, that's why I say this is a process.
Is it possible for you to avail the courts with that statistics through your council?
No, that is maybe because that is the DPPs, the one reason mandated. So maybe if I, I cannot commit myself here because the system, as I said, that that system we are also using for the intelligence, coordination of investigation and prosecution. So getting that out of that as it is, sometimes is cumbersome. But even if it is a specific, on a specific issue, that can be arranged and availed as well. But we cannot take the whole of it from the system because there are also some of the classified information. And each, and each country has the light of that one. Some of the information cannot be shared, especially intelligence because after all is not admissible in court.
About do I'm not satisfied? I think I want to request the council could avail the courts with any statistical research or information because we will want to know the trend, the current trend, is it increasing, is it decreasing? Vis a vis the measures you claim to have put in place in recent time. Thank you.
If I may, honorable justices of this court, if I can show the witness the report which he attached on his affidavit so that he can clarify of what he was, he was saying regarding the statistics of the cases and all that because you asked him about the number of cases, like seventy-one, why is it? I don't want to, to, to be the witness here, but if I can show so that he can give you the clarification himself from the affidavit and the reply from the respondent.
Mr. President, she has made an application. Are we granting the application? She wants to show the, the witness his statement on oath to be able to address one of the issues raised by us.
Yep. Elle peut présenter à son, elle peut présenter le document nous l'avons dans le dossier.
I think that she can do so because this document, we already have it in the file, so there's no problem as far as I'm concerned.
Vous pouvez présenter au témoin?
Yes, you may do so. You can show him the document. Can you hear the English?
So we have the statistics here.
If you can refer to the response, reply specifically on the attachments and there is a report from National Prosecution Services. And if you can tell the page exactly which you'll be referring so that at least they can follow you.
Page four for the report.
The National Prosecution Services report.
Should I proceed? Yeah. So page four, table two, you may see the number of cases per year. So you see from two zero zero six, one, two zero zero seven.
If you can wait until they all get the, they're there on the pages.
Yeah, they totally need to proceed. Yeah. So for example, you can see two zero zero six, see that the number is decreasing there. And this shows that the trend is that the number has been coming down. Two zero zero eight to twenty-three, so that has been the trend. But here, you can see there is no such cases of twenty twenty-four because this report we supplied twenty twenty-three, at the end of twenty twenty-three. That's where some of the data of twenty twenty-four you can find there. At the, taking that particular, for example, this year, we have that incidence of Gaita, we have that incidence of Asimakamachumuleva, you see? Such kind of thing, so the number has been coming down. For example, two zero zero eight, we had twenty-three incidences. So that has been the trend and the pattern. For example, in high court, you will find the out of, in those ten cases, that the three accused persons were convicted and sentenced to mandatory death penalty. You see? If you go to district court, seventeen accused persons were convicted and sentenced out of ten cases. That has been a trend. Now if you go to Court of Appeal, this depends.
S'il vous plaît, monsieur. Madame, vous avez eu l'opportunité de poser les questions?
Madame, you had the opportunity to ask a question to your witness. The witness has been, has been posted and has been cross-examined. Can you hear the English? Can you hear the English interpretation? Can you hear the interpretation please, English?
No. Can you hear?
Hello, can you hear the English interpretation?
Is it okay?
Can you hear?
Madame, can you hear me?
I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to avoid the situation.
Can you please check the channel? Can you please check the channel because they say they're hearing the English interpreter? Can you hear the English interpreter, please? Can you hear me? Interpreters, are you following us?
Je vous suis Monsieur le Président et il y a une.
Thank you Alfred.
Je vous suis Monsieur le Président et je suis prêt à continuer si l'autre interprète a des problèmes. Mais l'autre interprète n'a pas signalé qu'elle a des problèmes.
Can you hear me? Can you hear the English interpreter? Hello, can you hear me? English is channel one, please, English, channel one.
Je peux continuer si l'autre interprète a des difficultés. Moi, je peux continuer ici et va signaler oui. This is channel one English, I can continue if the other interpreter has a problem.
I can hear, I can hear the English says the president on channel one.
Fraser, can I continue?
I can hear the English on channel one says the president.
Est-ce que vous recevez? Est-ce qu'on reçoit?
So can you hear now? Can you hear the English please?
C'est la vocalité qui s'épare.
Is it working? Fine, can you check please? Respondent stage, do you receive the English interpretation?
Is it okay? Yes, we have an interpretation. Okay, great. Can we proceed? One. It's okay? Madame, vous m'entendez?
Madame, can you hear me? Can you hear the English interpreter? Channel one, please.
Mais est-ce que les interprètes vous entendez?
Interpreters, can you hear us?
Our English, we, we try to hear you.
C'est bon? On peut?
Is that fine now? Can you hear now?
Il faut changer le casque de l'avocat. Je pense que du Julius doit faire quelque chose. Julius kindly change the headset of the console. Change the headset and the problem will be resolved. Julius, would someone tell Julius to change the headset or Jack to change the headset of the console? The headset certainly has a problem.
Okay, est-ce que vous m'entendez?
So can you hear me now?
In English now?
Okay. Channel one, yes. Channel one, yes.
Il faut nous assister avec le micro.
Please assist us with the mic. Can you try now?
00, okay? 00. Est-ce que c'est bon?
Is it fine now? Is it working? Can you hear? Can you hear the English? Yes? Well, I was saying that you did present the witness that you told me ask questions and that has been cross-examined. And then you asked for the floor to ask us if you could assist the witness to recall a report or document. Why? And this is why the floor has been given to you. But now we are heading to questions and answers again, which is not in line with the request for the floor you made. Therefore, with regard to all the questions and cross-examinations that have been made by the parties, would like to stop here with regards to the witness. The court considers that it has been informed enough on his work and what he's done. And when we look at the evidence that you provided, we all have, we all have all the statistics and reports, especially the details on the number of persons with albinism. So I think that these documents are enough for us to understand the file. Do you have any other witness you would like to present to the court? Yes, no? If you have other witnesses. If you don't, let's adjourn our... I was asking whether you have other witnesses. Okay, they will come later because we are adjourning today. And we will resume the hearing tomorrow at 9:30. And then you'll have the opportunity to present your witnesses as and the Amici Corriere also will have the opportunity to make their oral submissions. And then we will cross, we will have the necessary cross-examinations and then come to the conclusions. This is the information I wanted, the court wanted to share with the participants. Have you followed all what I said? So the hearing is going to be adjourned today and we will resume tomorrow at 9:30. You have the floor?
Yes, you can have a floor, please. Yes, anything you see?
Yes, we have understood you. But before we adjourn, we specifically ask for the next week, the next witness tomorrow not to be recorded because he is going to give the personal details of people. So that, so we are asking if there will be no recording for the next witness, that is tomorrow. We are asking, we are requesting.
Okay, donc nous avons... La Cour prend bonne note.
Fine. The court takes due note of your request with regard to the fact that the witness will testify on personal matters and therefore you wish that this will not be recorded. Your request has been duly noted and tomorrow at the opening of the hearing, the court will pronounce itself on the matter. Honourable colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, representatives of parties, Amici Corriere, we will, we are adjourning the hearing today and we will resume tomorrow at 9:30 in the same room. Session or hearing adjourned. Thank you.